Good evening. The time is six twelve. This meeting is being recorded. Father God, we just thank you for your goodness and your mercy. We thank you for your peace and your compassion, Father God, first and foremost, we bind all confusion and conflict and discord with Father God in the name of Jesus. Father God, we just ask that you be in our midst, Father God. We just ask that you give us wisdom and knowledge on how to proceed in the future. Father God, I just thank you for everyone that's participating. I thank you for your goodness and mercy. In Jesus's name, amen and amen. I do the roll call. Councilman Fareed, Councilwoman Fareed?
Here.
Councilwoman Dionne? Councilman Harrison?
Here.
Councilman Herring?
Here.
Councilwoman Jones?
Here.
Councilwoman Ferguson, I am here. Councilman Curtis? Back here. We have five in attendance. A motion to adopt the agenda.
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yes, Madam President, I'm just wondering why my, and you don't have to answer this because you didn't do it. While my, I had a public hearing scheduled for the same night and I was wondering why it was taken off as an item for tonight. You don't have to answer it because I know you didn't.
You cut out.
I'm sorry. I had a, what's called a meeting scheduled for tonight. Public hearing scheduled for tonight and I know it was taken off and I know you didn't do it. So I just want to put it out there that it was taken off and I had to schedule for the Glen Arden day resolution to get it processed and passed so that we can meet a deadline. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the agenda has been adopted. We have two resolutions.
Madam President, you have to take a vote first. We didn't vote on it.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, so this is the vote to accept the agenda. Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilman Herring?
Staying.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Ferguson, yes. The agenda has been adopted. Now, the legislation, a resolution authorizing the use of $250,000 of American Rescue Plan Act funds toward educational supplementation for the residents of the city of Glen Arden. Did you want to address this, Councilwoman Fareed? Or anybody has any? Or anyone else have any comments on this resolution?
Sure, Council Vice President, thank you so much. This resolution was something that came about through discussions with several council members, actually over the last few years. A few years ago, our PGTPS School Board Representative Shayla Adams Stafford and myself organized tutoring for math help for parents to help their children and our school board member also took a further action to have tutoring on Saturday, Saturday school for the students. COVID-19 really has hindered the children's ability to stay on grade level and as a result, we are looking at many, many years of them being in a deficit. As a result, it is very difficult for the children to catch up to the on-grade level and it's really something that is going to be significant for the rest of their educational careers. So we're looking here to use the American Rescue Plan Act funding, which was designed to help address the repercussions of COVID by offering assistance to parents as they look for tutoring services or SAT and other college entrance exam prep preparations or other test preparations that are necessary for the children. This is really an investment in the future of the children of the city of Glen Arden. Hopefully, this investment will have a significant return for us with these children going on to amazing careers and, you know, building the city of Glen Arden. So that's what this resolution is about. The concept is that up to $3,000 would be given to the applicants and that is for the duration of the school year. So from September through June or May, whatever nine months is from September, sorry, for the duration of that school period to assist the children with tutoring services, which are typically out of reach for people. As example, Kumon, which is award-winning and has demonstrated its success over many, many years now in both math and reading, strengthening those skills for students. That's $300 a month for both subjects per child. So that can be a very cost prohibitive endeavor for the parents. So we want to make that ease that burden for them by offering this as a relief.
Thank you. Any comments from the other council members?
Yes, Madam President.
Councilman Herring?
Yes, I have a problem with the amount. Originally, I was in favor of that large amount that we were looking at, but when I talked to the treasurer, he said that we only have 600, a little over $600,000 to spend. And I don't think we should be spending 50% of it on this project. I think that you should have maybe $50,000 for the tutoring program and $50,000 for uniforms. I think that we should, and I think 3,000 is entirely too much money to give out to, I got 278 children in my ward alone. That, the way the grand, the way the program is written now, you're going to only serve 83, 83 people, 83 students. That is not fair across the board and is not equitable. It's not going to be equitable across the board. I think it needs to be relooked at. But anyway, the amount is a big thing for me too. And I need, I mean, if there's only $600,000 left, which I talked to the treasurer and he said that's what was left, a little over $600,000, I need Church Street done. I need $100,000 to do Church Street. So the kids that go on a tutor and everything don't get run over by a car because there's no sidewalks on there. I need to get MLK site redone. That's another $100,000. I need gazebos. I need cement work. I need some other stuff to complete that project. Hayes Street is crumbling away massively because of the bus traffic. That's a major bus route. I need $100,000 to get that done. I need, and I like, and one thing I would like to do is a senior program. I was looking at a senior program. I was talking to Councilman Harrison about doing a senior program and I think we should be, we should make it so that seniors could stay in their home comfortably and age in place by providing them with either walkers, assistance for lifts, ramps, lifts. If they want to change their current bathtub, because there's a company that will cut out a section of your bathtub and make it a walk-in tub where you don't have to spend $10,000 for one of these new ones. You can get, you can use your modified tub that you have, anything that can get them to stay in their, in home. I hear a lot of seniors are saying, I may have to move because I can't stay in the house. And so I, I like $100,000 for that program. So to knock 250 or 250, we're really $300,000 into programs. While I support the children, I support them a lot, but I think right now, the way the program is written, it's not going to benefit a lot of children in Glen Arden. I mean, a lot of the kids in certain parts of Glen Arden. Kumon is right there over there in Woodmore. You know, it's a walkaway from most of the homes over there. Math Museum, same thing over there. Again, it's only going to service 83 children. That's it with $3,000. I think that's entirely too high. I think that we should pay the fees for their tutoring fees and that's it. And when the $50,000 is gone, I think that'd be fair for anybody that got kids, they found a tutoring program. That's what we should focus on, not give a sad amount of $3,000. That's not going to benefit. Opera money was, was meant to affect as many people as possible and giving these high grants away is not giving, is not giving a fair share of money to the people who need it. Because I know, I can tell you right now.
Can anyone else hear him?
No.
He missed one out. So Councilwoman Jones, we can get back to him when he comes back.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Council Vice President. And we have one question for Councilwoman Fareed and is, did you present this plan to Mr. Himmler? The opera fund manager?
No, I didn't present the plan to Mr. Himmler. I haven't, I've never presented any of my opera resolutions to Mr. Himmler.
Okay, well, because I was thinking that we were, once we came up with a a plan for the money, that we would discuss it with him since he's the opera manager and he could tell us whether that plan is good or not. But you can't assume how many children in the city of Glen Arden will use the plan. Because we have, I don't know how many children, you know, we have in the city of Glen Arden, but you don't know how many are going to use the plan. So I have no issue with where you're, what you're trying to present at all. But I would ask Mr. Himmler to make sure that this is something that the city of Glen Arden can do.
Okay, so Council Vice President, let me just make sure I'm understanding the question because Mr. Himmler is the project manager. So he wouldn't have any say in what we're proposing, but once we approve something, he would be responsible for executing that program.
I'm sorry, let me cut in right here for a minute. No, he doesn't have any say one way or the other, but he, because he's so familiar with the program, he knows what things we can allocate money to. And that's all I'm asking to make sure that this is something we can allocate money to on the federal, the federal government guidelines.
Oh, this is absolutely, and this is one of those things is actually a direct impact from COVID. I can share it. I can send it around. Stanford University did an extensive study on this, on the impact that COVID-19 had on children, not just the the isolation, but the remote learning. That really was a significant impact on the children's ability to learn, particularly younger children. So we have a lot of delays in children as a result of that. We've, we've talked about previous legislations where children are impacted from a physical perspective and not really being on par with their motor skills development. So the impact of COVID-19 on education and children's performance has been widely documented. So this is one of those things. It's a very direct impact. I did also want to respond to the businesses that were brought up. First of all, this, this legislation is not specific to any particular tutoring services. While those Kumon and Mathnasium are within walking distance for Woodmore Town Center, which I'm not really sure what that matters, they are businesses within the city of Glen Arden. Kumon in particular has, wants to work with us as being a business in the city of Glen Arden. And so they've agreed to waive any enrollment and registration fees related to it. And so the amount that they would charge for anyone enrolled in this program would just be the flat tuition, which as I mentioned before, was $300 a month if you do both subjects. We're not requiring people to go to Kumon or to Mathnasium. What the preference is, is that if parents are using tutoring services in the city of Glen Arden, which again are not just limited to Kumon and Mathnasium, there are other independent tutoring services. There are people, you know, teachers who have tutoring services. So this is not just for those businesses. And in fact, the $250,000 that was put forward is actually a low amount. Councilman Herring is right. It is only for 83 people. What we have to remember is as a city of Glen Arden, we were given over $4 million for opera relief. And we've spent very little, if any, that is specifically designated towards children and the impact of COVID on them. Unfortunately, we don't tend to count children in our population or in our constituency because they are not voters, but they are equally important to us. And so we don't even know how many children there are in the city of Glen Arden that can potentially benefit for something like this. So yes, the amount of $250,000 may seem like a lot, but we have to look at it in the overall context of how much we had and how much has been given towards towards children. We've just recently given a significant amount back to homeowners in terms of a tax rebate. We've spent money and allocated money for things where we haven't actually spent all that money. So while there is about $680,000 that's unallocated for opera, there's, there's a larger amount that has not been spent yet. And we are getting close to the end of the year and we should move forward with spending that money to make sure that we don't have to give anything back. I think Councilman Herring's ideas that he raised are excellent ideas and he, just like I and any other council member, have the right to bring forth a resolution to propose those things. But we can't, we cannot act on one piece of legislation because there's an idea out there. We act on resolutions that have been presented to us for us to be discussing. Even with what Mr. Herring has outlined, those amounts adding on these amounts as well still allows us to do these activities. So I really want us to be thinking from the perspective of, we've been blessed with this money to do things to help our citizens and not be operating from a standpoint of lack where we have to be, you know, scratching at this last $680,000. There are other programs that we've put forward that have not been fully utilized and we can use money from there as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fareed. Councilman Herring, you kind of went out, so you can go ahead and continue.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I was just saying again, that it, I just feel it is too much. I just feel that, again, I have, because I don't know why I've cut out it. I have MLK Park that needs to be finished. I have Church Street that needs to be revitalized. That's $100,000 for the church, I mean, for Church Street and $100,000 for MLK Park. I have Hayes Street that has to be done. I don't know how much that's going to cost because it's got to be reinforced because we now have two buses going up and down Hayes Street, which is cracking up. Like I said, I want to have a senior program where we can help seniors age in place by providing senior equipment for them. You know, stair lifts, ramps, modifying their bathtubs to be step-ins. I just think that right now with $650,000 or $680,000, I was told it's $646, I think it was. Putting that kind of money toward, that much money toward the kids, and I'm not saying the kids don't need help. There's been a lot of programs out here that was helping kids. And again, I just feel that there's other things that need to be done in the city and that's, that's a lot of money to put toward one program of that magnitude. It's only going to benefit 83 people and that's my major issue also, is that it's only going to benefit 83 people. I have 278 kids in my ward. And I, and I know that for a fact because I got to count at Savannah, and that's just at Savannah Woods. That's how many was going to Savannah Woods. And I didn't even count the middle school and the high schoolers. And then, man, I probably got over 300, 300 kids here. You know, and the kids are counted and census and everything, everything else that we do, you know. So again, I'm just saying that until we know what figures we have and I, and I shouldn't, and like I said, and as a council member, if we got this money, I should not have to be going to the county because we're trying to go to the county now to get Church Streets done. And I don't think we should have to if we got the money. I should not have to go to them with my hat in my hand to provide a safe street for the kids when we got money sitting here. I should not have to go to them with my hat in my hand to get this park revitalized. Seven Street Park getting it redone all from beginning to end. You know, I had to do MLK Park three, in three phases from, in state money. But now that we got city money, I need to be able to finish it up. It need, like I said, these lights and these are gazebo. You know, so again, I'm not, I'm not then don't want to deny the kids anything. And again, the program should be paying for tutoring sessions, not $3,000 lump sum to somebody that is going to affect 83 kids. That is ridiculous when I, like I said, I got 200 kids. Well, if I get one kid in a program and it'd be lucky, I'd be lucky in my ward and probably in wards one, two, and the rest of the city and three. If kids get, if kids get in here, they're lucky. It sounds like a lottery system now. Because you only got 83 spots, $50,000 for tutoring. I don't know how much tutoring is, but to pay for somebody's tutoring, if they want to go to tutoring, I will focus on that. So that's my feeling on that one. I just, again, I think it needs to be looked at. Yeah, there may be other, other pots of money there, but I don't know if there are other pots of money there because everything right now is committed. We don't know if we're going to do a sprint to the end and get all of these, all of these projects done. I know most of the ones I bought have been, been utilized almost. And yes, I did give the citizens a rebate and I bet you them citizens are going to use that $100 to put food on the tables for their kids. So that was a give back to the children too. But I, again, I just think that it's too much. I really do. And that's just me personally. I don't know, you know, how anybody else feel. But I just think that we need to look at it and we need to stretch these dollars so that more kids, it makes no sense to sit there and say we helping kids when you got a population of kids. Like I said, probably like 600 children in this community in a whole, as a whole. Because we got three wards and like I said, and that last count I got was 278 over here. So I'm, I'm sure it's about the same in the other two wards because the population is almost equal in all the wards. So you probably got like eight or 900 kids in this community and you're going to only help maybe 10% of them? When you could probably do a lot more with, with given just with tutoring only, if they need tutoring? And the reason I said, and the reason I brought up those two facilities over there in Woodmore is because, again, my kids over here in Ward One, I got a lot of parents over here that work two jobs. They're not going to have the time to walk, I mean, get in a car and drive them over to tutoring. Or then if you, and then if you're going to bring people in to do tutoring, how do you know that they're certified tutors? How do we know? You know, it didn't just somebody in the family just say I'm going to tutor them and don't, they don't tutor them. They just get, they just get the cash. How, what, we have to check the balances that this, this program is going to benefit the kids the way it's supposed to benefit the kids and you're not going to have somebody to come out here and scam. So I just think there's a lot of open issues with this. I think it needs to be thought out more. I think it needs to touch more children. If we're going to trust the children, let's trust the children. And I think the price need to come down some. And we need to look, focus on some other major projects in the community. Thank you.
Council Vice President? Sorry, because there were some points that were raised that are just not correct.
Okay, well, I did want to say one thing before. I think the July 12 budget that was issued Mr. Stewart said that the 250 was, is in the budget and, and that I'm thinking that the six, I think he told me was 680 left, that that 250 has already been extracted from the budget. Might want to look at that. I think offer money is on the last couple pages, 25, I think, page 25. Yeah. And I think he, if I'm not mistaken, he said that, I see it in there on 2025, but he said that that was deducted and the 680 was remaining. Thank you.
So you're saying the 680 is what's remaining, the 250 for the tutoring?
Yes.
Right. I, I'm not, I don't know if Mr. Councilman Herring, what his understanding is of the resolution. It is for tutoring services. I'm not sure what he means when he keeps saying that we should be paying for tutoring services. And it's up to $3,000 per child. It is not a lump sum of $3,000 that is like, it's not like you apply and then you get $3,000. The way the program is structured is that no money will go directly from the city to the parent. The money will go to whoever the vendor is. And so that vendor will need to provide all the proper documentation to the city in order to be paid as a city vendor, which is how we avoid the scamming portion that we're talking about where anybody can just come and say that they're a tutor. And those, again, the, what we would be paying for are only the tutoring services. That is actually explicit in the resolution. That any other fees, like enrollment fees or anything else that may be involved are the responsibility of the parent. So it's not, you know, it's not that it has to be $3,000. The $3,000 is the upper and many people are using virtual tutors. As I mentioned, there are teachers who are either retired or they do this as, you know, part-time work and they, they tutor virtually. There are other services that do virtual tutoring. I know my daughter does a Mandarin class and it's, it's $20 a class. So it's not that it has to be $3,000. Again, it will be based upon what those applicants are requesting and not everyone is going to be requesting Kumon for the reasons that Mr. Herring said and others. Kumon is not a fit for everyone necessarily. But again, Kumon and Mathnasium have been hauled out in conversations because those are not just tutoring services. They're actually businesses in the, in the city of Glen Arden who suffered because of COVID as well. Because when COVID happened, they had to close down their centers. Children were not able to go and that was, you know, significant impact to them as well. And the other thing I wanted to say is that the ARPA funds were given to us in 2021. So we've had a number of years to write a number of different resolutions. I would have gladly supported a resolution to update MLK Park, just as I did for Seventh Street Park and Councilman Herring supported Seventh Street Park. So there were a lot of things and I think we're speaking as though these resolutions have been presented and we said no to them, but we're doing this instead. The ARPA money has been available. Any council member has had the opportunity to bring forth resolutions and it doesn't make sense to say that we can't look or move forward with the resolution that is actually on the table because of potential other resolutions that someone might want to bring up later.
Madam President, ma'am?
Yes.
Again, I, what I said is I think that we should only be focusing on tutoring services. I mean, this, this legislation also talks about tuition, tablets, and other stuff, exam preps. I'm just saying, again, we need to touch more kids. I think that it needs to be, find out what a tutoring session is and then see how many kids we can actually help with this money. Again, I like to know exactly how much we have because these numbers keep on floating around on, on what we have remaining. Again, I was told one number, 686 or something like that is what is remaining from all, from what was committed. And I was talking about as of 2024. And so I don't know if there's a misunderstanding or what, but I'd like to know exactly what it is. But still, I still feel, again, that this program should touch more than 83 children, possibly 83 children. He keeps saying up to, up to. If you say up to, then they more than likely going to get it. And because I don't know anybody who didn't get the up to amount when they applied for grants before. Again, yeah, I could have, I could have, I could have bought a whole bunch of, a whole bunch of programs and projects and everything else with offer money. But I also allow my colleagues to submit what they wanted to submit for it too. I wasn't going to sit there and hog it all. I could have submitted a, a, a plan for over $500,000 to do something over here in the, in the, in the city, you know. But now I'm looking at, I'm like, okay, well, we got some, some funding left over and we got to use it. Like I said, again, we need a generator on the building up there at Glen Arden. You know, to make sure the business continues if there's a blackout because we always have power outages over there. We definitely need to help the seniors in the, in the community with medical equipment. You know, so I want, I, I'm just saying until we know what the number actually is, I still think $250,000 is too much. And if you're going to do $250,000 then you need to be able to touch every student in this community. Every student in this community, not just 83. So I just think, I just think the plan is, 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 is going to help maybe 10% of the kids in this community. So I don't think it's a, I'll comment to you as a person. If you're only going to help 83 students, it isn't a good plan. If you want to help more than that, if you want to help a majority of the kids in here with tutoring and, 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 you know, exams and everything, then okay, that's something different. But 83 students, no, that, that isn't fair to the rest of the kids in this community. And I'm going to tell you straight right, right now, and I guarantee they leave out every Hispanic family or African family who are not aware of what the program is and what the program entails and probably won't even get the information for it. So I just think that we need to look at this very closely before it even moves forward and find out exactly how much funding we got left. Because again, I, I'm looking at $400,000 that I need now to get some things done and wrapped up with the offer money since we got to spend it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Herring. Councilwoman Jones, and then I will offer to yield this meeting over to the council president who is president? Councilwoman Jones?
Thank you, Council Vice President.
Thank you, uh, Council Vice President. Not every child in the city of Glen Arden will be applying for tutoring because there are some parents that are proactive. They already got their kids in tutoring. Uh, so, to say that, uh, all of the children in the city are not going to be touched by this, some of them may not even need this. So, uh, but the ones that do, I think the program should be available to them. Uh, I do have one question concerning this to Mr. Simpson. Can I, uh, ask him a question, please?
Oh, go ahead.
City Manager Simpson, uh, isn't the, um, Church Street sidewalk already, uh, we're just waiting for N, N Z I to do the work? Isn't that already included in, in, uh, to be done?
Uh, good morning. No, uh, I, I, we did get a proposal on that. Um, I don't believe it's been presented to get the work done, but we did get a proposal, uh, for Church Street sidewalk.
So, the other sidewalks are also a proposal, uh, I'm not the other ones, but the sidewalk across the street from the Meniskosable Center, that's also a proposal that's waiting to be presented?
No, that, the McLean, uh, from McLean to MLK, I believe that was approved in a resolution that has been, uh, a proposal been done, and that work should be getting started, uh, along with the other sidewalk work and street work in Ward Three.
And, and in the street work, that Hayes Street was included, was it one of the, I'm not sure if it was one of the, because they, it was, it was, uh, mentioned in a meeting that we were only going to do what was an emergency. Um, I, I'm not, I'm not sure that Hayes Street was, was that mentioned as an emergency street? I'm not, I don't know where it's being tore up at, but, um, uh, what part of it?
So, there definitely quite a few streets in Ward One that should be addressed, but the problem with some of the storm drain issues, uh, that the county is working on now, um, and that we're hoping to get resolution soon before we, um, if I can throw good ma, money after a bad situation, those things need to be repaired prior to, uh, completing some of the sidewalk work. Matter of fact, we just have one, uh, it looks like one resolution is coming to one small area of Dellwood and Glen Arden Parkway that I just saw on the county's website, just trying to determine when they're going to finish that work, uh, along with some of the other major repairs, uh, with the storm drainage issue there. Uh, otherwise, uh, Ward One streets definitely need, uh, and sidewalk work needs some, uh, some, some, some attention.
I looked at, like I said, I looked at the report that, um, uh, CPJ presented, and I just didn't, and they, they're only, we were only to address, well, we decided as a council that we would only address the, the emergency issues, and I just didn't see Hayes Street as an emergency right now. I know it, they all need work, but I didn't see that street as an emergency where, you know, and then traveling on it, I'm not, I would like to know where these, um, uh, where it's broken up at, if it's broken up.
Yes, ma'am. I know it's been brought to, to our attention, uh, and we're definitely going to be taking a look at, uh, Hayes Street as Councilman Herring has presented that.
Thank you so much. And to Councilwoman Fareed also, uh, I have read some of the reports uh, concerning, uh, students, and because of COVID and how the, uh, their level of education has, uh, dwindled, and I, I, I understand, uh, exactly what you're speaking of, and I think that that issue does need to be addressed for our children in the city of Glen Arden. Thank you, Council Vice President.
Thank you. I did have, um, question for, um, Mr. Simpson about, uh, that, with the, um, Church Street. How, um, um, I know that we're back in November, uh, in November, uh, twenty-three, uh, that came up, um, with the past, um, city manager, uh, with Councilman Herring and myself. And, um, you know, there was some opposition or some concern about the, um, uh, street lights, but, I mean, do you have any idea, um, as to, you know, when we can get to a place where we, you know, we can say this, where, I mean, to, to the place where the se, uh, second, um, Ward Two sidewalk is, because, um, I, I would have hoped that it was, you know, could have been done before the kids went back to school, but of course, that may not be the situation. But, I mean, I'm really not understanding what is the actual holdup.
Um, nothing actually, other than some of the transition that's taken place. Um, the streets have been identified, the proposal has been present. I wanted to get this in front of you guys just to confirm some of those streets, but we are ready to go with the Glen Arden Parkway from, uh, McLean to MLK. I'd anticipate that should start within the next two to three weeks. Um, maybe, uh, definitely within the next thirty days, uh, prior to the school being start, uh, starting. We should have that sidewalk on McLean as well as the other work. Um, N Z I's schedule um, shows that they should open up in doing this work sometime here in August.
Okay, when I was, yeah, when I was, uh, referring to the, you know, before school, I was more so concerned about Church Street. Um, that's, you know, as far as the kids, um, walking back and forth to school and, you know, had situations where I've had parents say they walk into the school and, um, with, uh, a stroller with, you know, the, the, the child sibling and almost get run over. So, that, that's more so now. I mean, I'm, I, you know, I understand that we're pretty much advanced with the Ward Two street, but my concern is Ward, that, that street on Church Street. Um, you know, why is it such a holdup?
Uh, I wouldn't say, I would say we, we have a proposal. It just needs to be presented. Uh, I know Councilman Herring and I discussed the, just the concern with the telephone pole that's located on the, the corner there where that sidewalk, uh, will sort of start. Um, we're going to be confirming that, that's, there's a work around there and that that pole doesn't have to be moved. It's still a bit of a question. Uh, and I'll Councilman Herring brought up some concerns whether or not that was doable or not. However, uh, a proposal was present. We can get that part solidified, and that can be presented to council for approval. Um, as soon as, uh, the next meeting or, or, uh, once we come out of reset.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, Council President Ferguson.
Thank you, Vice President Ferguson. I take it we've gone through the first piece of legislation? Correct?
I do with some on it right now, yeah. Yeah.
Okay, uh, and we're finishing that off. We're moving on to the next item, which is the...
I'm sorry, point of order.
Yes.
I do have one more question concerning, uh, before we move off on that, let, uh, let, um, resolution. Uh, Council President.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, okay, um, again, this is going to probably be addressed to the, uh, Acting City Manager, Mr. Simpson. Uh, have you heard anything or have you seen any emails come past concerning whether the county approved the, uh, uh, request from the city concerning the Church Street project? Because when I went to the meet, the last meeting at the county, I know they passed the resolution for them to receive that money into, uh, the, the county, but I don't know whether there was a, uh, the, the, the different people that asked for a distribution from those monies were, was one of them was the city of Glen Arden. Uh, have you? Or are you aware of that, that, uh, the city?
Yes, I, I am. I, I actually attended, uh, that walkthrough with the representative, uh, from the county. Um, I don't believe we were approved for that. I will confirm, I'm almost positive that we did not get approval for, um, that, uh, particular project. That is, I think that's the main reason why. We also came up with our own proposal, but I can, uh, get that confirmed.
Okay, so then we can move on with the city, uh, addressing that issue.
Correct.
Church Street. All right. Thank you both. Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Mr. Simpson.
My pleasure.
Thank you. Uh, Vice President Ferguson, we're still only have these two items on the agenda. Was there anything added during the, uh, discussion to adopt the agenda?
It was not.
Okay. All right, so last item on the agenda is the, um, resolution authorizing the use of sixty thousand dollars in the American Rescue Plan Act to fund the purchase of school uniforms for eligible children residing in the city of Glen Arden. Are there any comments, questions or concerns regarding this legislation?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Herring?
Yeah, um, but to circle back on what Mr. Simpson said, yeah, we were denied the C D B G grant. It wasn't approved when they put forth the, uh, request. So, we didn't get it. Um, on this one, I guess, I guess I have no problem with this one. I just want to know how will this work and where? How will this work when it comes down to the kids getting the uniforms? I mean, are we going to reach out to somebody? I mean, yeah, how, how is this going to work? That's it.
I'm, I'm happy to answer that question. So, the city would purchase the uniforms. So, when the applications are coming in and we have a deadline on the application board to help facilitate this as well. Um, the parents will be expected to tell us what they need. Um, there are two uniform stores in Lanham that, uh, deal with the schools that have uniforms that, um, are branded uniforms. So, meaning like it has the name on the uniform, um, and other schools that just require a colored polo and khakis, those items can be purchased from, um, Old Navy. So, once we have what needs to be purchased, those would be purchased by the city. Um, so with the, those vendors in Lanham, we could either use the city credit card or it could be through an invoice to purchase those items and then be distributed to those who applied for the program.
Um, Mr. President, ma'am? Yes, yeah. Uh, so did we reach out to them to let them know they may be getting like a large order so that we know that uniforms are in stock for these kids, so that when they're, so they're ready to go when the school starts?
So, these, these are not more kids than there would be purchasing from these stores already. Like, it's, it's, if we, if the city wasn't buying them, they would still be buying uniforms. Um, people would still be buying uniforms. So, what we're doing is just helping ease the burden of purchasing uniforms from the parents by paying for them.
I'm just saying, I know in previous years, I know that some stores run out of, run out of uniforms and people, their parents running all over the place to try to get them. So, I'm just saying, have we, did we reach out to like the uniform store who buys them both? Let them know we're going to have a, we may have a large order of uniforms, a large request of uniforms, and if they have inventory available to meet our requests. I'm, I'm just saying, I've seen, I've seen like when they run that Old Navy and all of them, they run out. Some sizes are sold out really quickly. You know, and they got to wait for the inventory to come in, and kids are waiting to get these uniforms. I'm just saying, we need to, maybe need to reach out to these vendors and say, hey, we maybe, we got a uniform program. We're going to use personal uniforms from you. You know, what's your inventory? Can your inventory handle it? And I think that's what, I mean, if we're going to do it, we need to do it and make sure the kids are ready for the first day of school.
Well, we don't have a resolution pass right now. So, I mean, I think it would make sense to reach out to them in terms of a volume discount, but I don't think we have to worry about them running out because, again, these stores stock for uniforms. I, I, in the five years now that I've been buying uniforms for school, I've, I've never experienced that where, where stores run out. They may not have a size right now, but it's not like a week's stockout. Yeah, particularly when, um, we're talking about the unbranded, uh, uniforms because it's Old Navy, it's, uh, Children's Place, Walmart, like, there's so many different places to get those things from. Branding uniforms again, um, I, I buy the branded uniforms from All American. I've never experienced that they are sold out of uniforms.
Well, I mean, I'm just saying, with my thirteen nieces and nephews who were in school and who are still in school, my, 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 their mother runs all over the place finding uniforms because they sell out of different sizes and everything else. So, I'm just saying, I think we, it'd be easier and be better prepared just to reach out to the vendor and just say, hey, what's your inventory like? Are you going to be ready for us to become?
Once we get a resolution pass, I think that'll be an easy thing to do.
All right, thank you.
Vice President Ferguson?
Yes, I, um, that was kind of like my ballpark as well. Um, I thought, um, they are, I think they have a uniform place down on Ford Boulevard, and they're, um, a lot in surrounding areas, um. And that we could go ahead on, and, you know, that's the ones, this, this, this pass, we can go ahead and, and, uh, contact those vendors. And, um, also, I, I would anticipate, uh, we have a, a large order that we can even, you know, request, you know, discounts and things like that. But, um, I personally, you know, have bought for my grandkids and um, children's place, you can buy their children's place and, um, Old Navy and, uh, where I might want to buy five out, you know, a week worth for each one of them and maybe only go buy two or three because the sizes were out. So, I think that we could get a head start on, you know, uh, contacting these vendors or whoever and then see, um, you know, we can place a mass order or, um, and also obtain a discount, um, for the quantity or the, the type of money. We, we spent a fifty thousand dollars, we should be able to get a discount as well. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council President, I, I think one thing to keep in mind is that we're not going to know what we need until we get the applications. We can't just say, like, go to Old Navy now and say, give us, put aside a thousand blue polos. We don't know, it's going to be based on who applies to it. Some schools are blue, some schools are green, some, you know, it's going to be dependent. And if it's branded, there's only specific stores. Like, my daughter goes to Reed Temple Christian Academy. We can only buy the uniform from All American, right? Like, it's not, there aren't other places that you can go to buy it. So, it's really difficult to get ahead of that in terms of reaching out to the stores, saying we're going to have this large order. We don't even know what schools we're going to, to get requested. Yet, so I think it, it definitely makes sense to reach out to them once we know what we need to order and, um, definitely try to give value and discounts for them, but I don't know what we would be saying to them now other than we're going, we, we're going to be placing an order. We, it's nothing for them to hold. We don't, they don't, we don't even know what we need yet.
All right. Any other questions or comments on this legislation? All right. Hearing none. The time is six fifty-seven. This meeting is now adjourned. Have a good evening.